Be advised that proper notice has been given by the Township Council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the filing matter. Notice advertising the Burlington County Times and Camden Courier-Post on January 4th, 2019, and post on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Morando?
Here.
Ms. Correio?
Here.
Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mr. Catchman?
Here. So we have a couple of items, so actually one item on our action meeting, and that is a Resolution 2019-62, which is a resolution of the Township authorizing the release of a maintenance guarantee pursuant improvements at 1003 Oak Avenue. Is there a motion?
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Morando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchman?
Okay, we have, there's one resolution I have, I need to walk on, and that's a Resolution 2019-63, and this is a resolution, we need a brief executive session to discuss a contract issue.
And personnel issue.
And a personnel issue. So if, if we could have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-63.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Morando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Okay. We need a couple of appointment, two appointment motions to fill some spots and for the zoning Board, first I need a motion to appoint Henry Singer to the zoning Board. He's a regular member for the term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Morando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchman?
Aye. Next week, I need a motion to appoint James O'Neil to the zoning Board as the alternate one for a term to expire December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Morando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchman?
Aye. Sorry about delaying getting started. Apparently the Brooklyn Bridge is the oldest technology in the state of New Jersey. So frankly, we have some easy ones, and then we'll go to the budget. First is Boy State. We typically do support someone who goes to Boy State, and usually Girl State. Don't they?
They already did Girl State.
We did Girl State already. Normally it's one boy. This time, the American Legion is asking for two. All I can say is I attended Boy State in high school, and it certainly leaves a lasting impression of government how it works. Go figure. And so I have them to blame. And anybody has any questions, input, comment, discussion? This would mean a $500 contribution to sponsor two boys to Boy State.
Motion.
All right, or a motion to approve?
Motion.
We need a motion to approve, but why not?
Sure.
Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Or do we have to do, wait, wait. Vote call? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Congratulations to the two young men who will be having a week of learning all about stuff. And finally, before we, no, two, first is the Community Cleanup Day. Jeff, do you want to just give us the, for the folks at home?
Sure. Run down? Every year, we do a Clean Communities Day or Cleanup Day. We have a number of dumpsters that are put out in the public works yard and accept items from the residents that want to bring them in. It'll be Friday, April 26th, from 7:00 to 7:00, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Saturday, April 27th, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We'll advertise it, we'll put it on the website, but we accept everything from, if somebody wants to get rid of truckloads of, they have to be residents at Delran, and they will be required to show some kind of ID, but they'll accept anything from junk in their backyard to junk in a house, and you just want to do a spring cleaning. It's very popular every year. You get a lot of items, and they end up having to pull the dumpsters once or twice during the weekend, they get so much, but that's what they're shooting for. And it also coincides with Clean Communities, the Clean Communities Grant. We use the Clean Communities Grant to pay for, you gotta take it off.
Awesome.
Is there a limit on the size of the items?
If you can fit it in a pickup truck, we will take it.
Okay. For those of you who don't remember, Alan is a Delran resident, so that'll, so I'm sure, that was, thank you for the general information.
Scaring me, Alan. What it is? What it is to do?
And we don't take the pickup truck. It's about all we don't take. So do we need any kind of approval for this, or is this just an FYI?
Yeah, it's more of an FYI.
Great. And this is, this is in conjunction with the Clean Communities Grant, right? Well, that's great. We'll get that on the Facebook page and the website, and let people know that they are, they are good with that. Okay, next is, needs our approval for the Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Jeff, do you want to just give us the quick rundown?
Sure. The name of this is the Educational Services of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing Agreement. We had a vendor come in and take a look at a couple items that we're interested in, and he had indicated that, or asked if we were part of this call-up, and we haven't been, and if we were purchase items from him, it would be significantly less, 20 to 30 percent, and it is one of the vendors we're looking at for items. I looked at the website for this. It has almost every single school district in Burlington County, and it has about six municipalities. Municipalities are permitted to join. It has just about every county in the state, and it's something that the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs has approved for purchasing, similar to state contract. You know, we've been using some national contracts as well lately, and this is just another avenue, and if we find that this is the better avenue, that it gives us one more option to purchase. And it's indicated that for their type of equipment, it's significantly less than the New Jersey state contract. So we'd like to add this to our tools of being able to purchase, and we require the approval of the resolution that's attached.
Now, would that resolution be voted off tonight, or a public meeting, or do we need it for tonight?
We don't necessarily need it for tonight. As soon as you're ready to, you know, you're comfortable with it, you'd like to have it.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to take place tonight.
I'm assuming that we're going to pass it, but I just, just want to get around time.
It seems to make sense.
You can ask it now if you want.
Yeah? Any other questions?
I'm ready. The only thing I would ask, there's one change, can we change? Where is it? And authority, it says, can you have the chief executive officer, can you change that to a chief administrator officer? It'll be easier if I'm able to sign off on it rather than have to go to the mayor for purchases.
For what?
It's under authority.
I'll be right back.
Right back to the resolution.
Okay. One other question. Number 11 on page three of the agreement, it said, "No participating contract unit in the cooperative pricing system shall issue a purchase where the contract price exceeds another price available to it from any other such system in which it is authorized to purchase paid from its locations." Does that inhibit you in any way? I thought you thought you could.
No. We would, we would, we would take a look at all the options we have available to us to purchase before we would go with this one, just like we do, actually, when we do a national contract purchase, we have to prove that that's the best way to go, so this would be similar language. Great.
Jeff, you don't have a problem. I don't see why we can't do it tonight, right? Maybe you want to review, and if you agree.
And our office doesn't have any objection from a legal standpoint. This is purely a policy decision at this point.
Okay. So then I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-64, and that's a resolution authorizing Delran Township to enter into a cooperative pricing agreement.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Morando?
Aye.
Ms. Correio?
Aye.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Catchman?
Aye. Moving right along to the big item on the agenda, it's, it's obviously that time where we're going to talk about the budget that has been presented to us. We've all had an opportunity to review it, and I'm sure we'll pull up questions, but I would like to ask Jeff if he would take a minute or two for both, the folks that are new to the process and for the folks that are watching at home, just so that everyone is clear on what the process is. Jeff?
Sure. In our form of government, the mayor provides, presents the budget to the Township Council. So to go over the budget process that we've had in Delran, the departmental budget requests are submitted to the department heads back in October, and they review them for about a month and submit in November. Once they're received, and I put them on into the computer, and the mayor meets with the department heads in December and early January, this year, early January, to go over the departmental budgets, reviews them with the members of the department heads, and basically makes adjustments, and then ultimately submits a budget, detailed budget sheets to you for your review, which was done on February 26th. With respect to this year, the budget timetables have been extended, as they have in just about every year for the last 15, actually. The budget for this year is you're going to review tonight, and also March 26th. We need another night, we could use March 19th, introduction on the budgets to take place on April 2nd, and then adoption would be May 7th, and at that date could be a public hearing on the budget. So then, what I want to do is kind of hit the big picture of the budget and then work our way through the details. Put some of the items on, on that board is, one of the first things we have to deal with is the net valuation. That's the amount of property that the Township has that's taxable within the entire community. And the, when you take a look at the net valuation, because these are some of the questions I usually get somewhere along on the budget, so I figured I'd put them up there. For each penny of our tax rate, it's 141,585. So when you start looking at the budget and say, okay, what do I need to do to reduce a penny, it's, you have to cut it 141,585 dollars and/or add 141,585 dollars in revenues in order to offset a penny. Second item is, in terms of residential valuation, we have a million, oh, I'm sorry. It's a billion, 90,000, 90,679,000. I apologize, missing some zeros up there. And essentially, all the other properties would either be commercial or industrial. The difference between, that's, that's supposed to be 1,900,000, 90 million. The difference between the 1,415,853,382 and the residential valuation is the remaining portion of the, of the tax base, which is commercial and industrial. I think it's along those lines. So we have residential properties, we have 5,161. That doesn't account, doesn't count apartments or anything along those lines. So if you divide that into, and again, sorry, I'll hide the zeros later, the average assessment on a property will come out to 211,330 dollars. So each penny on their taxes for an average property that's assessed at 211,330 is $21.13. So in order to cut a penny from the tax rate, you've got to cut 141,000. If you cut it 141,000, that's $21.13 on somebody's individual taxes. So that's the big picture. And it's, after the 679, that should be 200, through the zeros. Sorry. Now, these are usually the questions I get, so I wanted to touch base on them. In terms of our, the actual property tax bill, we represent 21.9 percent of the tax bill. The rest goes to the school, the county, and the fire district. We're 21.9 percent. So for the average home in Delran, based on the average assessment and last year's tax rate, the average homeowner is paying 1,631 dollars to us. The remainder goes to the other entities. This is, these are the only funds that the Township keeps. The rest of the money does go to the other entities as they quantify their budgets and get their budgets paid. Just looking back, again, big picture, over the last five or six years since 2013, I just went back, actually, I was looking to go back five years, 13 to 18, we went from .756 cents to seven, or .772. So in the last, it's actually six years, we've gone up 1.6 cents total in terms of taxes for local property. So for the average, during those six years, we went up 33.80. That's it. And again, we're 21.9 percent of our tax rate. The budget that was presented to you thus far, you all had a budget summary sheet. Operations from last year were very good, and we had a fund balance of 9,285,157. The, what, the only thing we did was took the budget that was provided and then used all of last year's revenues to determine where we'd be at, but we still have a significant amount of fund balance that you can utilize to offset that, and that's something we can talk about down the road. It's not something we need to touch base with today, because I figure we'd be dealing with the line items themselves. And then there's three adjustments that have to be made that I found during the last week, where there's just either a typo or an issue was missed. One is in streets and roads. Let's go through page number. It is in page strip six. If you go down to subaccount, all the way to the right, it'll be 290, or 298, no removable condo. There should have been a number in there, $50,000. It's zeros right now. Previous years, it was 60,000. That should be $50,000. It just wasn't, apparently wasn't saved when we put the number in.
This is for what, what we're, what we're looking at for this year?
Yes.
The 50?
Yes.
Is that under actual or under?
It is under the left two columns, what's being requested by the department head and what was approved by the mayor. The other one is health insurance line item. When we reviewed the budget, we still didn't have all our numbers in. That is page four of 11, and it's 202, on the right-hand side, all the way down under group insurance, and it says health insurance, 202, and last year it said 860, this year it had 910. That number is actually 880, 880,000.
That we're requesting?
Yeah, reduced by 30,000. And the final one is, I'm sorry, does everybody have that? I'll give you new sheets with those things in there. Recycling, salary and wages is another typo. They are salary wages.
Page 11?
Actually, no, there's not a problem with that one. I'm sorry. That one's fine.
That one's fine. That was it.
Those two.
It's one of my questions anyway, so we'll come back to that.
So usually, we just go page by page if you have a question on there, is that, or you want to do it?
Yeah.
Just starting with page one.
So typically, what we've done in the past, certainly write on these, these are for our own edification and decision-making. So I know, for me, I just kind of go through with a marker and a pen, and sometimes I used to use Post-its, but I found that to be cumbersome, so I just write it on here. If you have a question, I think Tyler, you and I are the only ones that went through this before, so, but I know Tom goes through budgets all the time, and Virginia and Mike, you know, this is the first time through, but it's basically, we're just kind of making sense of it. I'm not a accountant or mathematician, but sometimes just, it doesn't look like a duck. So as we go through line by line, we'll, we'll typically, at the end of the page, is everybody okay, and we'll move on to the next. Doesn't mean you can't go back. This is, this now has become our budget to adjust accordingly, up or down, and then the five people at this table are going to be the ones voting on this and putting your name to it. So let's look at, if anybody has any questions, we have, I just wondered, Jeff, down on the, under mayor and council, we have two lines for dues of membership and a line for miscellaneous that seems, I'm not sure what it is, and maybe you can help us understand why.
Sure. Miscellaneous was, we were looking to do some things in the courtroom that we went out and solicited some vendors, and they did not respond. Actually, we solicited three vendors to come out and look at the amplification system and some other things, and only one ended up coming out, did measurements, and then never responded. We've had another vendor that actually we've worked with in the past, just came out two weeks ago, and then came out again next week, and is, we're looking at both amplification system, possibility of a new mixer in here that you might need, and also TV, flat-screen TVs in the courtroom in order to accommodate presentations.
Right. And that, that is in court even, or was it the courts?
Yeah, the courts is a little different, the court. We always already do the arraignments in the jail, but we have to update that, so they're looking for updated equipment for that as well, so we don't have to sit behind that big back TV.
TV that looks like a Camaro. It's a big TV.
So that would end up being a flat screen as well.
Right.
So waiting on numbers, but it looks like it's going to be within these figures that we're using.
That would, that would also allow planning and zoning, rather than trying to squint in the lights to figure out what, what's on the foam board presentation, to have it be on a 65-inch TV that's, I'm sure, zoomable, depending on the technology that the vendor brings, but if I read the, the background material correctly, you'd even be able to, to connect wirelessly. I don't know if anybody mirrors to their TV from their phone, but you just connect. So I'm assuming there'll be smart TVs that'll be able to do that. Tyler?
Yeah, and Jeff, does that include a TV for in this room?
I know. We didn't request one, but we can, we can add that.
I know me and Gary talked about it probably, just in the.
Yeah, and I think that, that we do have presentations in here, I think it would make sense that if we're going to do, we can all see, public can see, if we position it right, folks at home can see. The, the amount of, you know, TVs are just becoming so cheap, and they're, you know, bright and big and clear, and so much easier, you know, we should at least step up into the 90s to get some TVs working in here so that we can see what we're doing better.
If we're just going to get it done from there, you might as well.
Yeah.
Add one more on here.
Yeah, it's not going to be, it shouldn't change all that much other than the cost of the additional TV, I would hope.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the dues of memberships, are there, there, is that, excuse me, for the attendance of the league? We've had less and less people going to the league, and also the attendance of things like newly elected officials, budget, well, budget process if they're paying for it. I mean, we've had a couple counts of people go to the free one, given by governments, where that's what those were for.
Right.
Right? And then, and again, the league, Township doesn't pay for hotels, Township doesn't pay for meals, Township doesn't pay for anything except registration for the league, which is $75, I think? 65, even that, even a bargain, early bird special, JP signs it so early. And, and if you do that, then you can go to attend a class, and it takes 250, $250. I, I thought it was that, but I wasn't sure anymore. So anytime you can spend 75 to save 250, that's the kind of bargain I like, so.
There's also a requirement that the Township belongs to the league of municipalities, which is about $1,000, but that gets charged against my count in the same line of presentation.
So money, money well spent. Certainly, it's good for us to keep an eye, a close eye on what's in our column in our section, especially, not that the other, the others that we don't keep a sharp eye on, but I always like to make sure that, that we understand everything going on in our section. The other thing that, that stuck out to me was, we do kind of a, the ballots and elections, we do kind of a, do it annually, even, we have an election every year? We do have elections every year. So there are.
We pay for our primary election cost no matter what year it is.
Right. Okay.
So that's, that's.
So even though Delran Township doesn't have an election, there's an election here because there's, in New Jersey, there's always an election. It never stops. Anybody else have any questions on page one?
You answered mine.
I just follow up on that one. Why is it, not that it's much in comparison to anything else, but just out of curiosity, why is it 1,000 more than last year for the ballot selections? I just saw that now. Is there, is just a general increase or something that, just ask before, make sure we have it covered?
Just because we went over the 90.
That's what I was saying, okay.
I know Phil Murphy passed that ball. Right, you have to send absentee ballots, if they were an absentee ballot in like the last two years or something, right? Because of the.
Significantly increased. They never had the ability to, to apply for an absentee ballot to cover all elections. So, I mean, it's possible, you know, I don't know what the cost is going to be, but they are anticipating higher costs, and it may be above this.
Remember, we're, we're, we have to be cautious to not, I mean, we, we, we've cut this over the years a whole lot, but we try not to cut it to the exact bone, because if there's overages, then it becomes a bit of a nightmare, because it's not like we do it at home. We're going, oh, well, okay, I'm going to take it out of that pot, put it in this one's, it's a government, so.
One more question on that, on that page, Jeff. On the bottom, it says 220, it says Finance Audit Auditor miscellaneous, and it has requested about 5,000, and then the administration recommending 3,000. Do you know why there's a difference in the two recommendations?
Yes. We don't have as much to audit, we don't have as, it was an additional item that we had to audit last year that we don't have this year. That's a slight reduction.
Anybody else on page one? Well, we're down about 9% of this covered already. Very good. So next is on page two, under the treasurer. I don't know where, my question, Jeff, is probably in, comes up in wages spent too. There's a bit of an increase, is that just because of all the gyrations we have to go through currently?
Where are you, which one?
So it's actually, just under treasurer, in the treasurer, at the beginning, top of, to page two, just in the totals, actually, I was looking at the totals, that there was, looked like there was a $25,000 difference.
Yes. It's one of the items I'm actually going to cover in close section.
Okay.
In terms of, we have a part-time CFO who's retiring.
Right.
And we advertise for both part-time and full-time to see what we can get. We had notetakers for part-time. Quite frankly, we should have a full-time CFO, but down the size, there's very few that have part-time, which we're making it work, but we're going to have to go to a full-time CFO. This number's probably going to be adjusted a little bit, and I'll talk to you about that as well. Down, good, but it's to accommodate a full-time CFO.
I'm just, Tyler?
Jeff, under assessments, could you explain what the tax appeal expert, where you see? Line item is 10. Like just, what's the context of that?
Which number are you in?
Page two.
Page 247.
247.
247.
Yes. Yeah, that was. Yeah, that was, we had, we did an emergency for, I think it's a pine oil fire, two years ago?
Yeah.
What, two years ago, and paying it off over a couple of years. It was for an appeal from New Jersey American Bureau.
Oh, no, I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Gotcha.
So, you know, again, just for, for council's education, you know, we don't ever know when that's going to happen, and we try to be, try to avoid them if we can, but there's some times where you gotta, you have to just hire a tax appeal attorney and go for it. And as I recall, we saved a considerable amount of money.
Yeah, we didn't end up spending the majority of that.
It rang a bell now that you said that.
Go ahead. Same thing with collections, the salary and wages, line 111 on that, that seemed to be a significant increase from what we spent last year. Is that, is that, see the 119?
Yes, no, it's a, it's a, it's a similar deal, because they, as you recall, we had to authorize an additional amount above and beyond what we were paying our tax collectors last year for the tax collector. In addition, we had some person in that office that was out for significant period of time and collected a salary.
So like anything else, there's, these, these kind of adjustments, and I think we all talked about the fact that, that, you know, sometimes these numbers go up and down, and it doesn't always make sense in a column, but it makes sense as people.
One of the things I didn't touch base on, I think I touched base on it last time when we talked about whether we would, it's usually, one of the things that we go back and take a look at too is three-year averages, and part of that, actually, I did take a look at five-year averages. And the reason is, there are some years where we'll have a reduction because, say, a line item was fully spent in the year before, and because of that, some of the items that we would normally buy, we wouldn't have to buy that year, but we take a look at it for five years because they have a tendency to roll a little bit. So that's why some of these, you'll see numbers that look a little different than maybe what last year got, was expended.
Amazing.
Jeff, did I see something like on line 240, 244, it says collector dues memberships, for example. It has requested 250, admin recommended 300, and on the way to the right, it says 250 appropriated in 2018, and then actual zero. Does that mean we actually, we didn't actually use any, is that, or is that just?
Yeah, and what that, in that instance, what it was is the old collector, the new collector has conferences and memberships that the old collector did not have.
Okay. Any else on page two? Okay. So let's move on to page three.
Let me, I'll just make one general comment on planning and zoning. Last year, planning and zoning had a lot of meetings canceled, so there was not a lot of activity, and this is one of those, we really went and looked at three-year averages and five-year averages, because we don't expect that our year is going to be as quiet as was last year, there were an awful lot of meetings that were canceled last year. And with some of the developments that we may be looking at, we don't expect that to happen again, so you're going to see a lot of line items where money wasn't spent, and that's, that one is purely driven by activity.
Yeah. Last year's planning, I think three-quarters of the meetings were canceled because there was no application, but I don't see that happening so far. Nothing really looked out of, out of whack to me on that page. You have something, Tyler?
Affordable housing, professional services, 28. We expect to keep that going forward, or can we start to take money out, you know, slim that down as we handle this?
I, I think that number's going to be, you're going to need every dime of that ever, that's my guess.
Yeah, it's not, we, you know, we settled, but it's not.
It's not over.
It's not over until it's over.
Okay.
Again, this is a, this is a spending plan. If doesn't get spent, it gets put back into the surplus. Uniformed construction codes, salary and wages, we went, it obviously went up, we went, what, part-time to full-time?
We went part-time to full-time, anticipating the construction that's going to take place, and we had, we're actually, by the end of this year, won't be one subcooder inspector that was there last year, which they've all retired or left. We anticipate that, this is one of the line items too, that's kind of a special, it has some things that are tied into it, in that you're not supposed to really make money in this department. If you start making money, the state comes down and takes a look at it, and to make sure that you're not generating half a million dollars and only spending $250,000, will come down and ask you to reduce your fees. We're not there, because essentially, there wasn't a lot of activity, but we expect that activity will pick up this year. One of the other things is, the new construction crew official has talked with me repeatedly since we've come on board, he's going to be making some recommendations in terms of changing some fees and some other items to make sure that our fees are in line with, there's some things we should be collecting more on that we're not collecting anything on, and the fees were getting reviewed every year, and the last two years, I think with the construction crew official getting ready to retire, didn't really happen, and so he's going to be taking a look, a much look, a closer look. He's already brought some ideas that are probably going to come to this table in terms of some ordinance changes that are going to have to take place too, because there's certain things he's seen that perhaps the right, the right policies and procedures weren't in place to do it the way it was being done. So he's kind of cleaning up the office, doing a nice job.
Good. Well, you made the adjustment already in the insurance, health insurance, that, I'm scratching my head a little bit. I know it went up, but I didn't think it went up that much, but that's a good thing.
It's, we're going to keep looking at that. One of the things that affects that is the employee's contribution amount, was one of the things we were waiting on, was the final dollar amount that gets adjusted. And that's one of the other reasons that it went down, it may go down a little bit more before, before we introduce, you know, trying to take that tight pencil down.
Right. And on the same page, on line 11, the actual spend from last year to this year, that looks like it's going to go up a little bit too. So that, was there a reason for the dip last year?
Well, there was no dip, it's been down because we haven't had a contract.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Retro and the whole bit, so, yeah, it's fair enough, it's significantly understated. Once, once that contract is signed and the retros are done, that will impact each year, not the other years that were covered by the contract that were previous, were reserved and sent, but this will, we're going to hit this button.
Got you. Okay.
Jeff, on that page, on line 206, I see that there's none requested for the health prescription, but I was just curious, it says negative 210 in the actual.
That's a reverse.
That was a reverse, okay.
Yeah.
It shows, but it's not something you guys get involved with.
Okay. Okay. You on the five? Doing really well tonight, it's a kiss of death. So next is the police, I see that we're still providing ammunition, which is, which is good. When we first started cutting many years ago, I guess the chief, how many bullets do you actually need? And he reminded me that they have to train, so that was, that's why ammunition apparently is pretty expensive. Beyond that, it has in here for purchases, that's in this budget, that's not in separate in capital? I was just confused.
Police cars?
Police cars.
They don't have a fire use for life.
Oh, that's right, that's right. We talk about it, but it's part of this.
I do, I do see, I do see another line item that doesn't line up. Police emergency equipment should be zeros, the police equipment is the 10,000. Because you'll see the expenditure to the right.
So where it says 500, should we think that?
Should be 10,000, and the 10,000 should be zero. We don't, we don't differentiate anymore. We used to have a line item for emergency equipment, we just call it all equipment now.
And Jeff, I have a question about the traffic guards. Is traffic guards miscellaneous, is that different from the school crossing guards?
Same thing.
Same thing. And that's all of this?
For the equipment?
Oh, this is for the equipment for them?
Yeah.
Oh, I got you.
The salary's on the page before.
That's why I missed it, I kept looking for it, and like, oh, there you go. I was going to say, that, that's a heck of a bargain, that that's all we're paying for, all those crossing guards, all those mornings and afternoons. Okay, feel better now. I kept looking past it, thinking that it was coming up, but I didn't see it at the top. You have, that's okay, you have our, our contribution to the squad.
Yeah. Okay. That's actually a loan, but you have to put it in, it's an appropriation.
Right.
We haven't done anything with the debt either, so it has not been paid yet. I had my first meeting with the squad, March 26th, later this month.
Anybody else have any questions on five?
I just had a quick question about emergency management.
Is that somebody in-house, where we contracted out on that?
It's in-house.
It's well-powered.
Okay, that's right, okay, I just wondered, because a lot of towns do use somebody through the police, I mean, the fire department. Okay, thank you.
Jeff, do we, do we know what the police miscellaneous is on 299, the 200 dollars? I mean, just in general, I know miscellaneous is.
Catch all of it. Usually, there's a contract kicker, that when they work so many hours, they get a meal, that's one.
Okay. So the officer's working a certain amount, they're going to get overpaid for it?
Jeff, wasn't that, didn't the chief say he raised that Delran night out?
That's overtime.
No, there was something about they were giving away, or something, like I think that, no quote, but.
Oh, yes, you're absolutely right.
I think that's all, and that's the other thing that was in there. They were giving away like cameras to residents, and it's like subset eyes, they have a program with, I mean, maybe Jeff knows more than I do, but I think there's some.
Subset, little knickknacks and stuff that they gave out, and pencils if you had one.
That's the ring, ring camera, I mean, you said they were giving away a ring.
Yeah, the ring, the ring camera, sorry.
It's like a little.
Police ring or something?
On your door, that.
Oh, the, oh, the doorbell.
Yeah, the doorbell. There's like some law enforcement programs.
I see, so it has some law enforcement purpose, like.
Yeah, they give it out.
Save to the community type of thing, and, okay.
I just remember seeing that somewhere.
Interesting. I'm good. A little something.
I did.
I know. Anything else on page five? No, mine. So we're on page six, we have the correction on, in the streets and roads on 298. So, so this, the, Jeff, I had a question on, in recycling on line 111, that, where does that, what, first of all, this is, is this right?
Yeah, that number's really high.
$140 million, we were.
That's correct.
That's.
And are they hiring?
Yeah.
My goodness.
What this is, what this is, is that it used to be, many years ago, I can't tell you how many anymore, but recycling was outside of cap in terms of your spending. And so public works departments would put some of their guys in recycling and some in streets and roads. This essentially is the line item for two of the guys in the public works, and quite frankly, there is no difference between those people and the people above them, it's just that we were told to keep it this way, because it doesn't, it's not outside of cap anymore. If you do recycling, and we spend a significant amount on recycling when it comes to composting and things like that, we can justify far more money than, than is here, but it doesn't matter because it's not outside of cap. So essentially, it's just another portion of the streets and roads program. We do try to have the items that those gentlemen that are doing some of the recycling activities assigned to that line item or those, that department, but essentially, it's just another part of the streets and roads program. It used, it used to serve a purpose, it doesn't serve it much, it hurts a little bit, but it's.
And it was never $140,000, like, oh, no.
No, it wasn't.
Like a correction was, was being made.
That was supposed to be $140,000. I only looked at this about 800 times, and I still didn't do these things. We do it so much, it just, it's hard to catch it all.
Anybody else on page six? Yeah, at any point, I mean, the purpose of doing this over two nights is if you should bought something in another review and say, ooh, I meant to ask that, or you had a note or something, we just do it again.
No, I do, I do have one on that page.
Go ahead.
At the bottom, under trash collection 209, we have 525, we're looking for, that was 507, is that, that's not salary, what does that increase?
That is actually, that is actually the cost of collecting trash. So what it, what's in there is both the contract for the trash company, which doesn't increase, so it has nothing to do with the increase, other than when we add new stops, that gets put in there every time we build a new house, so there's a slight increase there. But the other part, portion of the increase is, we had about three-quarters of a year where, I believe, I can't remember now, for Summer Hill or the Grand, but we had an agreement that once they came off their one contract, we either have to reimburse them or provide the service, and we started providing the service for their dumpster pickup, and it came in during the course of that year. So that's why it increased. We still have 2021 on the traction contract, and that remains flat all five years, but as we add new units, it will increase, it increases per unit.
And the, the fees are in here or no?
No, they're saying landfill.
The landfill. And as we, as we, I don't know, those abandoned homes, not all of them, but a good chunk of them filled, empty homes don't create trash, but full homes with residents and people do, so that, that's, glad that we have a sharp eye on, on this, this account, and.
That was the only good thing about having vacant houses, was the landfill fees kept on going down, because, no, they weren't generating trash, but now that they're filling up.
What's the, what's the price per unit, do you know? I mean, just in general.
It's like eighty-some dollars a ton, I think. It goes up 3% every year.
Okay.
I had it in here somewhere, maybe I don't, maybe it's 30, I mean, the annual, it was. I don't have it on here, I'll get you the exact number. We only have one option, it used to be that you had options where you took your landfill, and now you have to take it to the county landfill, otherwise, they won't let you participate in the recycling program, and they're, they're charged for the recycling program, and then it would cost a lot of money to re-produce the program, so it's a no grant.
And it would be, it would be an accurate statement to say the more that we recycle, the larger that grant typically.
The larger the grant, and then, yes, then the more recycling. And your landfill fees will go down a little bit.
Right. So if there's a lesson there, it's, what can be recycled, recycle, and, you know, that saves on trash. And, you know, that saves on trash in the dump. That gives us a bigger grant on recycling and the recycling collection is free as opposed to the trash. So that's a win-win.
And you pay a recycling tax, so you're paying for your own grant. A little editorial there.
Is our money coming back around?
That's exactly what it is. At least it comes back around. Let's not get, let's not talk about franchise fees, please. All good questions. Jeff, who was that, how is the salary?
The salary is...
Melissa.
Melissa. It's a woman, it's a woman in James' office that does like food license, merchandise, dog licenses. It's in her office, but essentially deals with a lot of the licenses that she'll help. It gets charged to her.
Gotcha. Anybody else with questions or comments on page seven?
Yeah, I just have a quick, the, the dog regulation miscellaneous enlightened me.
That's for animal control.
Just for like the animal control, whether it's somebody we have or we contract out.
We contract out.
We contract out, so that's what that costs us.
Yeah. We do, we do receive dog licenses and that goes towards helping pay for it.
Right, okay.
But, yeah.
Do we need to remember on that, I mean, I'm asking you kind of out of curiosity off the top of your head, what, how much we collect for dog licenses? No, I mean...
What's the number of licenses? Last year was like five hundred, it's way down, like, what are the years? Was it five hundred and some? Because it used to be eight hundred or nine hundred.
Yeah, it was in like the six.
Six. So what do you figure? Ten dollars?
Fourteen dollars.
How much do we keep that? Let's take it as three.
Every person, a dollar, twenty, three if they're... So if you can just take ten dollars times six...
Hundred, six thousand dollars.
Do you think we would get more buy-in on that if it was online, like a registration online for that?
True full answer.
Yeah.
It's a typical issue. Yes. What, what used to bring about dog license increases and the numbers staying up where annual dog census not going to endorse now.
What? Really?
But hardly anybody does them anymore because again, they also don't pay for themselves. But we used to do them every year. It's been a long time since we've been, done one here. And you're not going to endorse if you're a dog or keep going after the house. That's basically how it worked. Recently, we've seen with the storm knocking down a lot of fences and enclosures, pets were all over the place and the animal control officers would pick them up. They've noticed with a lot of our towns, owners are just not renewing these licenses when they have them registered to begin with. And that's when the owners start to go. But it's, it's an ongoing issue for every municipality. Nobody's collecting as much revenue as we show.
Can't say that at my house. I got, I got two rescues of their, both licensed.
Jeff, you, on special programs in the recreation, line two-two-seven, what are those amounts compared to last year? What, it seems high.
The increases for, it's more budgeting for Delran Night Out and those things where before we were collecting or trying to get people to voluntarily contribute towards it.
Yeah, before, we did the, the RAC takes this column, so I shouldn't speak on behalf of Joe, but the RAC took on a lot of events that we have to do now. And we really beefed up with the winter festival in Delran Night Out, which are extremely costly to do them at the magnitude that we want.
Right.
And last year, to Jeff's point, I mean, we were scraping together sponsorships just to, to get the necessities.
And actually, I just wanted to know if that was included in this?
Yeah, that's Delran Night Out, the Winter Festival, Veterans Dinner. The only thing that we don't, I say we, but the, the senior citizens, that goes to the senior citizens group. So that's the only thing that doesn't really touch events. I can speak for the RAC, they greatly appreciate. All of that enters a long way.
The, just because I was in a position of holding the microphone, people came up and talked to me a lot. And to, you know, everybody that came up said, this is what we want more of. So, so I, there's a spot that we want to, we want to encourage and make larger each year. This is certainly a spot, I think it's, you know, the park was named Community Park for a reason. And I think that people really, really like to, really like. So, good question though, because I forgot that that special programs is where that was. And I, so we're at the twenty-seven, is that what, what's in the plan?
No, I mean...
I keep getting the columns.
Maybe Jeff can speak better to how he divides it up, Joe, but I, it kind of all is aggregate.
But, but what I'm saying is the number that we're looking at is...
Twenty-seven versus eighteen, right?
The, the admin recommendation, is that correct? Those are the numbers that we're looking at. That's, that's what we're gonna vote on, right? This column.
What, what is the difference between requested column and the admin recommendation? What, the, the requested is eighteen thousand, the admin recommended is twenty-seven. That's what I was trying to figure out, one of the other items here.
So the, on this item or...
On this item in particular, as, as an example, there's a few I'm trying to figure out the difference.
So obviously, some of them, a lot of Jeff's looking that up. You know, if the police ask for ten thousand dollars for something and is determined that it could be done with nine or twelve, then that's what, that's what the mayor and Jeff recommend.
It was, it was, Jeff, it, it doesn't break it down, but what was submitted was for eighteen recommendation, but the matter was twenty-seven. And it just has spelled out tree lighting, night out, Veterans Dinner. So it's to provide some additional funds in reserves.
I, I read your notes, notes that were on in the back. Because I, that jumped out, I mean, I read the...
I know in terms of the RAC though, the, that, the twenty-seven doesn't fund. They use all of the funds in there. You know, like some of it, he makes the most of all the funds. The twenty-seven alone isn't going to cover the two events.
The one event was almost fifteen or sixteen by itself last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think aggregate of seventeen, not withstanding police overtime and all that.
Right.
So just, just as with the general, that's what that's.
And again, the, these, this particular section, this is what the residents see and want and ask for. So, you know, I'm, I'm all for this and hope that we continue to fund this the, the right way. And, you know, this is something that has a direct impact on quality of life and all the good stuff that we're here for.
Yeah.
So, good job there. Anybody else have questions on seven? Okay, on eight. I'd like to, I'd like you to ask BSNG for a reduction in our, in our electric rate. He's not even listening to me.
I'm listening.
I have a quick question in, in general, Jeff. I know telephone's kind of put throughout, but do we, do we pay Verizon for the landline phones though? Because I know we actually went through this at work. Verizon's like increasing the price on standard landlines? Because I think they want people not to use them anymore and switch over to voice over IP and like SIP lines? So, but what do we currently do?
Voice over IP now. There's more in there than just telephone.
I mean, it was just in general.
Yeah. I'll get, I'll get to a specific answer, but we switched a couple of years ago.
I know, but that's good.
Was that when we put the new system in?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's through, is that through Comcast or Verizon?
Sometimes they have a voice over IP through the office, but then it still goes out on a Verizon landline. And they're like, they keep increasing the price because I think they want, it's so legacy, they want people off of it.
Right.
But they, so the best way to do that is just to keep raising it every year.
And we, we market it every year. Have a company come in and, or companies come in and...
Okay, so we...
They give us quotes and we'll do that again. Most of the dollars now sent us for equipment.
Suppose similarly, there's no way around the landfill, we have to charge here.
The, and that's what Gary was explaining in terms of municipal landfills, that that was the one that was decreasing every year because of the vacant houses has turned around significantly. When we look at our vacant house list, it's been cut at least in half. Plus we've added about twenty. Twenty homes are out at Moriachi's right now, but since they're supposed to be forty at the end. So for adding... Where's the Moriachi, the one out on Precro, in Hartford? Between...
The Ryan Homes?
Yeah.
Across from, what is it?
But I think the more significant number really is the vacant homes. Because we saw them go up, we really saw our landfill numbers drop. Like, that is, that's a...
So, in, interesting point is that while the banks may have been paying the taxes, there weren't, there weren't, there was very little negative cash flow from us because of the trash wasn't, they weren't contributing trash. Now that there's people in there, they're contributing basically the same amount of money in tax revenue, but now it costs more for them. The newer homes, you know, especially those newer homes, probably are paying a significant amount of taxing, tax to the township. So while the, the costs will go up, you know, there'll also will be contribution made. Unlike what happened with, when the abandoned homes started to fill, that was just, it was sad to see. And they had to live there and it didn't help our property values. Now that we're correcting that, you know, there's, there's always a cost.
I had the one question on the gasoline from last year, the difference. And obviously, there's a reason that's attributed to that and then we're still at the same number going forward.
The reason is that we have a shared service with Riverside to utilize their gas pumps.
Okay.
She bills us about six months after the completion of the year. Six months after half a year. The number usually comes in when it's all said and done. They all come in at about one sixty-something mark if gas prices stay the same. But for whatever reason, they're not in a hurry to collect their cash. We're not in a hurry to pay them until we get a bill.
Okay.
Thank you. Right. I think, I think we may have, you know, mentioned that.
Every, every year for about ten years.
Yeah. And it, it always comes out.
So I'm, I'm the guy this year. I'm the guy.
You'll get, you'll get it from the public too, because when the document comes out, everybody always sees it and says, because I guarantee you, we probably won't have a bill before that. This is a document, that's my guess.
And that happened, that's, that's one of the categories that is, is the, you know, the, the only answer is that we haven't received the bill yet for last year.
Crazy, but true.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on eight? You do realize that we're...
Just to point, to point out one thing on, on eight, is the police environment requirement system significant increase, we have no control over that dollar amount.
That's probably the biggest increase in the budget this year.
Yeah.
You know, I do see, I, I, the length of service awards program.
Yeah, we, we've got that in there. We're not a hundred percent sure what's going to happen with it. That was a referendum that was passed to provide a, money towards deferred compensation program for volunteers in the emergency squad. And with what went on with the emergency squad, we didn't get anything submitted for payment for the length of service we were last year. And we just put in this year what was in last year. I'm not sure that they're gonna have, you know, that number's going to reach that number, but that's essentially what was approved when we went out. So until we hear something, we're gonna leave it in. Like I said, as I have a meeting, that's one of my questions I'm gonna ask. I have a meeting with a consultant, March twenty, I said twenty-sixth, but I think it's twenty-seventh. March twenty-seventh, I have a meeting with a consultant of the squad and, and the group that's kind of overseeing what's going on there to, that's one of the questions I'm gonna ask is where we're at with that. I, I don't know how last year's will get paid because I don't think anybody will meet the criteria. They, there's so many calls and these kinds of things, they meet the criteria for the pay. I don't need the sort of comp or the length of service award, which is essentially deferred comp program. But I'd be afraid to touch it and reduce it until I hear for sure.
All right, so we're back to nine.
This is essentially grants, right? Yeah, there will be some additional grants that get thrown in here, this as the state before you adopt. But these grant, all the grant funds that we put in here will be offsets, meaning that there will be an appropriation with an offset revenue, so they will not impact the budget from tax increase or reduction. But state has a tendency to come along during this time of the year and start saying, okay, we'll give you, they're all small, none of them are large, but grants. And also, if we have any reserves from last year, a grant that wasn't spent, it'll also get put in here as well. And again, it would be an offset, it won't have an impact on the budget. First, I, I know we just got notified on a body armor grant, so it'll probably be a body armor amount in here. But we don't have the confirmation until we get the confirmation from the state and a certification that we have the funds, we can't put it in.
This shows a reference to the Sade grant, but less than the Sade grant. That's a forty-one, seven, twenty-five with six zeros in the middle of the page. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the Smooth Operator. Sorry, it was a dad joke, I'm really sorry. But I couldn't pass it up. Okay. I'll wait for you. It was good, you know, it was, I've never seen, I don't remember seeing that grant maybe before, but sure was there.
It was probably a one-year, if it's a one-year deal, it stays in there for a while. We're sure it's not coming back because there's always some legislator that has an idea for a grant. Some of them go away and we never see them again. Some of them come back. And you're just like, you drink, you drive, you lose grant. How many, drunk drives grant? It's like, why do you change the name? If you change the name from year to year, it makes no sense, but drives over, you get pulled over. You drink, you drive, you lose, it's the same thing.
One robbery, one...
Yeah, exactly.
More than people getting bombed.
Well, I guess that, that somebody's name was on the legislation for that.
It's not as iconic as the Sade grant.
The Sade grant, it's just... I couldn't, I couldn't pass it up. See, and you'll be thinking about it, you'll chuckle all the way up.
You just got it.
Okay. Do you have a little something?
No.
I'll tell you what, that's a, that's a Smooth Operator, S-A-D-E, Sade is...
You don't know that one? It's in every rom-com you've ever done.
I could sing it, but not, not on tape.
That's where we're at.
So, Jeff, on page eleven, although we're still on ten, do we have any questions on ten? Okay. The capital improvements, is that our capital improvements?
Actually, down payment, yes.
Down payment, right.
The capital improvement fund. The reason we, the reason we didn't match last year's number, and it says zero, but that all gets moved to the next year. That's one of the line items that actually moves. Most of the other line items, once the year is done, they're gonna go sit for twelve months and then ultimately come back as fund balance. But the capital improvement fund is like, basically a revolving line item. And we already have about a hundred... And we already have about 150,000 in the capital improvements fund. I mean, even though you spent a significant portion of it earlier this year with the down payment for the road program, we don't feel that we need to add a whole 150. Because the reason it was 150 last year is you had the road program and you had to move. So we're not in that situation this year.
Right, so just from a background, because I know Jeff eats and sleeps this stuff, but we have to have money in the budget in order to have the down payment side of any, any capital improvements we do, so that we have some, we have to have that money available before we go out and do what we have to do. It's a, it's a, it's a classic, it's a classic initial pole government. Anybody else have anything on 11? We're not done, but congratulations on getting through the first part. Because that's the end of the municipal line by line.
The last item, the reserve fund collected, get changes. And I don't know if they touch base on the class on what drives that. But essentially, we have to estimate what the school is going to need, what the township's going to need, what the county's going to need. And the fire district apply a percentage of collections that we're going to use. And that'll generate a number that, so if the county, if the school and the county were to go up, for instance, that reserve for uncollected taxes would automatically have to go up. We have some control over it, but not complete control over it. That's, right now, it's set at a number we're comfortable with. But if we hear anything from the school board that, that they're going to have some monumental increase or something like that, we might have to adjust it. We usually don't know in time, unfortunately. So we have to take shots, we have to take estimates.
Okay, so guess what's next? The sewer budget. This is much smaller.
Before I start on the sewer budget, I do want to tell you that we're, when we get to the second page and we get to the items in terms of capital in sewer, is we're looking at all of those. And I think I explained it a little better, maybe I haven't, to all of you. Is that we have a significant surplus in the sewer budget. And we're looking at paying off any debts that we have that's not under NJIT. The NJIT program is a very low interest and sometimes no interest loan program that applies for the bigger projects. Usually if it exceeds a million five, we'll go to the NJIT for loans. The reason we don't go under a million five is it's a cumbersome program, even though they'll tell you, if you guys go to a center, they'll tell you it's getting better and easier. It's not, although it is, but it's still not easy. There's a lot of, a lot of difficulty with borrowing. And you end up, a lot of times, having to borrow on notes until you can get their permanent financing under NJIT, which almost defeats the purpose. But what we are taking a look at is funding some of the temporary capital that we have with the sewer, with cash. And we'll come back to you with that program because we've generated a lot of surplus in that line, that's why.
So, so what that translates to from, from our perspective, from the governmental body, is that, you know, we haven't raised rates in a very long time. And, and if things continue to go the way they're going, it means that we should be able to maintain that. And that's really, that was always our goal, to be consistent and stable with some of the, with the rates, especially in the sewer department.
You haven't had a rate increase in nine years and you won't have to have another one. I won't say for nine years, but I would guess nine years.
So, I mean, you know, that, that was, that was, as this council evolved, that, one of the common threads was always, you know, the stabilization of taxes. So that you go, oh geez, you know, this went up, that went up, this went up. At least if we can keep it in line from our perspective, then we're doing our part. And that's what, that's what, what is happening, especially in the sewer department. So, anything of significance? For the, it's been, sewer plants are described as bug farms. For those of you who haven't had the pleasure of touring one.
All the time.
You know, well, you probably do, that's right. You know, I would suggest having a cold if you, before you go. It's a, it's an interesting tour, but they're basically growing bugs. And that's what, that's what is in the weirs. And if they, if there's more to be removed, they grow more bugs.
The most important thing from our perspective is that they're operational 24 hours a day. So they have to keep running no matter what happens. And that's why when you have maintenance contracts and R and R, that's what those sort of funds are for. We have contracts for mechanical, we just approved one, I think at the last meeting, for mechanical and electrical. So that if we put out the bid and if we have an issue, we can call and then let them out and make any adjustments as well as our own people. But they have to operate 24 hours a day, there's no downtime. And that's why the electric bill's even higher.
And they're, and they're using, they're doing pumps.
Oh, cool.
You know? And we want them to work. That's what I know. We want the pumps to work and the toilets to flush. And everything else is a bit of a mystery, but I'm glad it's working.
Jeff, do you know?
Totally not phased by the whole sewer talk.
I can't talk with a pun right now.
Go ahead.
So, let's see, with the overtime, we're looking for 120 and before it was less than that. Do we, do we really anticipate that or we're just trying to protect ourselves with something like that? It seems...
We're just trying to protect ourselves. We looked at, again, three-year averaging and we weren't up to that 62 number, but we were closer to 100, so we were, but it seems to, it does change a little bit from year to year. And we were having an issue earlier in the year with overtime, but it seems to be in control now. So it was more a matter of trying to just be careful.
It's a strenuous job too. People can get hurt and people can hurt somebody else's company.
Well, that's, that's actually what we ran into. We usually get to three years, is there were a couple of times where we were down to two full men for six months at a time. I don't think, we seem to have the people in place that that's not going to happen again. And I said that is that we had some people that had some, more injury prone, I guess is the best way to put it.
The plates being 24/7 or they have all the bells and whistles so they, they not man?
Bells and whistles, so they don't man at night. There are people that do come in on the weekend, again, for a shift.
Yep, okay.
And they have a pretty complex paging system and call system.
Yeah, no, some do, some don't, that's what I was asking about our particular situation. Yeah, all the pump stations have a tendency to generate a lot of the overtime where the alarms will go off in the pump stations. When you get down on this budget and look at telephones, it's not telephones, it's pump station, or it's the pump station lines that go to notify us when something's going wrong with the pump station, the wall's failing or something like that.
Still no puns, Mike? Okay.
I got one off camera.
Okay. Any else on page one of two?
Pretty straightforward.
It is. So Jeff, the only question I had was in capital improvement, is that, is that separate from, from what we do when we decide what projects we're going to take on?
I mean...
What is this, what is this? That's not deposit, down payments or anything, is it?
Well, again, this is the area that I said, we're going to have some, we're probably going to have something new for you for the next meeting because we're looking at, that, that's one of the areas where if we wanted to purchase or pay for something in cash, we put it in here and so we'll have that for you at the next, at the next meeting. I've asked for some things from you over here and just waiting on it.
And I know from our, you know, one-on-one conversations that you've been all over this. Appreciate that. This is, this is a plan coming to fruition. You don't do bike patrols anymore, is that...
We have the bikes, they don't use them very much. Where, where, you went somewhere else though. That's not sewer.
No.
It's in the wrong spot.
The very bottom.
I was wondering about that.
Are they like little tiny short bikes that are in the line or what?
That's, that doesn't belong there.
Okay.
That's why it's all zeros, I guess. Now, where does a bike patrol line item in the police budget end? Was that an actual line?
I've seen, I've, I mean, I've seen them on bikes. They will be like, some parades and stuff.
That was flushed out of the sewer program?
There you go, there you go, I knew you couldn't, I knew you couldn't.
That's all I got.
Went down the pipe.
Well, you know, that's... So... What else we need to talk about with this in our first pass here?
I do need to talk to you about, in closed session, about a couple of items.
Right, right, Mike, we just wanted, is there anything else budgetarily that we should, we should discuss tonight?
I mean, if there's, again, if there's any questions or if you're interested in one of the line items, either cutting it, you know, let me know, we'll get you new sheets out with all of, some of the things that I found mistakes on, we'll get new sheets on those adjustments. The middle of this one will fill out, not, it's not a lot and it won't have any impact budgetarily. Well, it will from one perspective, but like I said, is we are looking to pay off any kind of notes and take care of them because we, it doesn't make sense to go beyond it on them.
So, just a general question with a specific example. Things like we had talked about, new signage up front, you know, maybe some improvements to the, to the landscaping or to the, some of the monuments and the, and those kind of things. Is, is that in here somewhere? Did we, I thought we talked about it last year.
There's, there was some money for a similar sign to, like, not anything grandiose, but a similar type of sign as what's out there now. If you want to go beyond that, because I've heard some discussion about sign, electronic signs and things like that. Jerry is giving you numbers now, actually talked about it today. Again, he had some renditions of the signs and frankly, they look too much like what was out there. And that's not what we wanted. So we were told him to go back to the drawing board and get us a couple of options, including electronic signs. So we'll bring that back. If that's significant, more likely that would be in the capital.
I was going to say that, that has, you know, a longer lifespan that would be something we would do in capital. Wouldn't be included in this or it could be if it's low enough?
Well, if it was low enough.
Is there anything in here that would cover any type of improvements to some of the soccer fields? A lot of people ask me about that, I don't know if this is included or not.
Not yet. When you discuss, if you want to discuss capital tonight, I mean, that would be one of the things. You guys have taken action on the road program for this year. So what's remaining are a couple of the departmental requests on equipment and then those kinds of things, any changes you want to make to athletic fields and where, any changes you might want to make to this building or any other public entities would be a discussion for the capital budget.
And we used to do that.
Usually do that on the second week. The second shot at the budget depends on, you know, when you want to do it. But again, in those, the capital budget, as you guys probably learned in class, doesn't tie you into the purchase. It's more of a, of a, nobody likes to say wish list, but it is. It's a wish list. That in order to bring it to fruition, you would have to, at some point, put an ordinance in place down the road to provide some kind of funding for it. But the first step would be to put it in the capital budget, the capital plan. We're supposed to do, you know, a one-year for this year and then three-year, five-year type capital budget. And, and put it in the capital budget and then ultimately put an ordinance in place and authorize that to, to bring any of those improvements into place.
So...
It was like when you did your road ordinance, you did a temporary capital budget because you have one, you don't have one in place in January.
Right, so for, for things like the sign up front or, you know, repair to a field or, you know, if we wanted to do anything with Chase Place or the next soccer field at Community Park, we would put that in. And, and, you know, a wish list is just like if you're on Amazon Prime, it's the same thing. Put it in there, you're not spending the money until you make the decision to do it, then you do the ordinance to fund it and then you spend the money. If you award the bid. So there's a lot of steps in between, but I think what's most important to know is that it doesn't happen unless it's on the wish list. And it, you know, it's not that we're, you know, so that nobody misinterprets it as frivolous spending. It's things that, projects that we might want to do. And it really depends on how we might say, well, we want to do these three things. And the first two come in, the bid's so high, we could never do them. So we look at three or four. Or they might come in so low that we can add four to the first three. But it's got to be on the list. So that's what, that's what we would, I think we should consider that. I think anybody who, who, you know, would, would think about what you want to do and if you have any questions, we should do that for the second meeting, excuse me. I don't, I don't think we're going to need that middle meeting. I think we did pretty well tonight. Do you think we need a middle meeting?
And so, I mean, one of the other things we're going to, again, is capital item instead. Some computer upgrades. We have some issues with the one program after January of 2020 can't be updated for free anymore.
Wait, what?
Windows 7?
Oh.
It's a great business model.
So you've got to upgrade everything to Windows 10. And a lot of computers aren't Windows 10. So we're going to be bringing some things forward on that, I'm just getting numbers now.
It's the way it works. You know, fortunately, I think the hardware is coming down a little bit, the software. They don't have to make their money. So we can, yes?
One other thing, I talked to Jamie this, today about, I think, previous. You know how we do the live stream? We're going to, if the council's okay with that, I know, I think I talked to Jeff about it. Just move over to YouTube because it's free, the stream to YouTube. How much do we pay for the live stream? It's a couple thousand, right? Like 1,200 or something? So that's 1,200.
And we can pre-archive these, we can download these to archive them, you think? Wow, Jamie.
We'll figure that out, I just want to, I just thought of it.
I, I know, we, I, if we're able to download the actual...
I can download it on live stream.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not sure how YouTube works.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying for the ones that are already in the camp, we can download them.
Is that, you're able to do that with YouTube because that's a requirement?
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that'll stream right to YouTube. So there's no reason to spend a thousand dollars on something that's free somewhere else.
The question was, you, okay, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that you can download YouTube videos if you want to download them. It's nothing to do with the people in the audience behind you nodding their head. I know I can, but I don't know that, you know, I have software to do that, but...
From a public's perspective or from like Jamie's backend?
I think, is that what you're saying, that from a public's perspective, we need to be able to do that?
From our perspective, we need to be able to do it.
Well, if it's up on YouTube, isn't it, isn't it pretty, I mean, it's public A, B. It's not going away, I would assume that they have a pretty robust backup.
On the backend, you can download. The owner can download it. You're not supposed to download. Public's not supposed to download.
Yes, YouTube, but...
And if this may be able to Jamie that for over purposes, she can produce the same to members of the public then. That's the question.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a general thing budget-wise.
So we, we own the content basically, even though it's, it's publicly available.
It's the same, it's just, we're not going to pay live stream to do something that YouTube can do for free.
Right.
Until they change their...
Until they change their model and then...
With YouTube, will we be able to see the activity?
Yeah, it has all that, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, if there's analytics with that.
I mean, I asked the council once that you guys are okay with live streaming.
Well, I think if we get the same exact service for free, why would we pay for it?
We can have our own channel on YouTube. Alan will be hosting. It'll be the Alan Show, yeah. So, our, our task is, Jeff's going to get us some additional information if we have anything that we remember after the fact. that we remember after the fact. Review again, if you would, just kinda look through some of the department requests, and get a handle on that, and then for the second, the second budget meeting, we'll talk about what things we will, we will entertain, and which we don't have an appetite for, and then we'll put together our, our, you know, where that's gonna fall in capital. And that's the process, you, you know, the questions were, as always, I'm always impressed with people that are doing this for the first time, they find all the things that are, that are out there, that are, that are outliers, and.
And you get, you had a lot of the information that, all the questions that we would go over, if they were problematic or not, if we had a cap problem, if we had a spending cap problem, if we had a tax levy problem, we don't have any of those issues, that was covered on that in one sheet, we don't have any of those types of issues. Those are usually the kinds of things that you, we could end up spending time on if we didn't meet those cap. The same thing with, with the sewer, if it's not a self-liquidating sewer utility, then we have to spend a lot of time with that, but we're not there as well. So, and the, the actual budget document, for those of you that haven't worked with it, doesn't have any of that kind of detail, and it, it just has police salary and wages, police O V, that's it. So it all just gets, you know, just minimized into two line items. Where we have, say, 800 in here, that ends up being about maybe 80 in the municipal budget that we have to follow the budget document. This year, they were supposed to be doing, it probably doesn't mean anything to you, the fast budget, where everything is online, every year we're told it's going to be. This year, my understanding is they're still having problems with the debt to state, so we're not sure that it's gonna happen. But it takes up a lot of everybody's time in the finance department. But I keep hearing there's a lot of bugs with it, so I don't know if that's gonna take place, but it really doesn't impact you all, but it does impact us.
So, again, Jeff, good job, please express to the mayor, thank you for his work on this, and the department heads that are kinda getting used to, you know, staying within in our means, and as stewards of the president's money, let's just keep doing what we're doing, this is gonna be working very well. So, we do need to do reports. Danny has a report, I'm gonna move around as usual. Jamie, anything for us tonight?
Just real quick, I've talked to your friends every day, and we attended the senior citizens' luncheon yesterday, and we, and they asked if they, sorry, advertised their bus trips, and different types of township, what's like.
They usually do, don't they?
No, they never have.
Oh, they never have?
No. But nobody has any issue with it, I could just create a page for the young and seniors, or.
I think that'd be great.
Put in news or, or somewhere on there, so that they're trying to increase their membership, and advertise some of their trips.
Great, you hear that, sir? Anything for us at open?
Just one item I had mentioned to Ken and Gary, that we had a request from the fire company on Chester Avenue to use our parking lot for parking for their bingo. They didn't have a problem with it, so one of the things that, I just wanted to inform council, so everybody's aware, we didn't have the time to get everybody on, on board or have an open public meetings violation. But they also want to use the county's message board to point to parking in our lot for that night. It's a Saturday, is it a Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, and it's at night, so it doesn't have any kind of impact on the township operations.
The crowd's like a little rowdy, though.
Apparently, they, they transport them from here down there, because it's an awful long walk, apparently they drive them.
We used to use them, they said in the Stan's Park.
Yeah.
And they realized that part.
There's not enough room there. So, that was it.
Okay, Alan, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight. Okay, we're gonna go around the table, and welcome back to our, we're two councilperson, who beat me here, even though he traveled thousands of miles in life, he went about nine, just took forever. Anything tonight?
No, no report.
Okay, fair enough. Anything with Tyler this evening?
Real quick, I know we talked about it before, but I think there's a couple ordinances that we should have legal look at and just repair, I guess was the right word. Reconstruct, there's some issues. One of those is the zoning appeal, appeals ordinance, right, and Stu say that's out of date, so I mean, I don't think there's a reason we should have an out-of-date ordinance on the books. And the second one was, because I do this on my free time, reading ordinances, township councils ordinance, and the mayor's, like, organization, it says that council reworks in July, which, that's a holdover. So, maybe we could just have, I'm asking if council, we could authorize legal, to, you know, go through those two in particular and make those adjustments.
Yeah, I, I, again, for those, those that weren't around back in those days, it was a municipal election, that the term started July 1, and therefore, we rework in July, when we move to the November partisan elections, we moved rework with everyone else January, the first week of January. So unless anybody has an objection, we'll ask the attorney to take a look at that, make the corrections necessary.
Yeah, the zoning and the, it wouldn't impact anything.
Right.
Day-to-day, it's just cleaning up some of the books, right?
It's a lot of. Yes, sir. It would be my pleasure to do so, I'll obtain, as, as it pertains to the zoning appeals ordinance, I can obtain details from Jeff, or would you like me to get in touch with you?
Jeff and Stu probably have, we'll talk.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
And Nick, council, is it?
Virginia, anything this evening?
We're good.
Michael, anything this evening?
Report.
So I just have a couple of quick things. Jeff, we talked about this a number of times. There's been some lively chatter on the, on the social media webs. About the potholes behind.
Actually mentioned earlier.
Oh, oh, okay, so we need to, we need to do what we need to do to get them, get their attention, or whatever, I know it's a private road, but it's impacting the safety of the residents, I think, at this point, as the number of cones that are living in that pothole is growing. The, I wanna say a cautionary thank you to Home Depot, who's having some issues with their, with the residents that were complaining that they were, the trucks were in the back running from 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, and idling, and then backing up, and the backup alarms at 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. And I got a message today from the resident that was directly behind that, saying it was a pleasure to wake up in the morning without beep, beep, beep in the air. So we're, today was the first day, hopefully, of a, of a good turn, and coming in today, apologizing for being here late, the bridge went up, I was about 26 cars from making it. I could see that the police coming in to stop traffic. But as I was coming down 130, the cars were parked to Route 130, in the edge, launch the new parking lot, it was, I haven't seen that, I can't remember since I was a kid, that, that parking lot was full up to Route 130. It was just great to see, and, and I'm happy that that's, that's turned around so, so completely, and it's not even done yet. So that's the end of my report. I'll ask for a motion to go into public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we have any comment in the public? You, sir?
None tonight.
Nothing tonight? You, sir? Nothing tonight? Love this public. Motion to come out of public?
So moved, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're back in our regular meeting, this is a session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna take a three-minute bio break, and then we'll be right back. Pretty good. We're starting a late start, sorry, everybody, about that.